Okay. Welcome. We'll start this board meeting on this fine Monday of August. Wow, it is August. So we'll call this meeting to order and we'll establish that we have a forum beginning with a whole call vote. Corby?
Here.
Juan Carlos?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
John?
Here.
And I am here as well. We do have a quorum. Corby, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Wonderful. To help ensure that we're centering our board work around our shared values and serving our students, we begin each of our board meetings by reading our district's equity framework and the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of the agenda. Juan Carlos, would you please read those for our audience? Thank you.
In the Verona Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse, global society, and lead a healthy, self fulfilling life. To meet this mission, Verona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and inequalities exist in our system such that some individuals run the basis of their identities, base barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity. And next, the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement. There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, the Ho-Chunk Nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you're on the ancestral land of a tribal nation as we begin our meeting to honor the land upon which we stand.
Thank you. Moving on to adoption of our agenda, are there any questions or comments on the remainder of tonight's agenda? Let's do the Zoom pause as well. Hearing none, are there any motions to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Thank you, Meredith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Corby. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Tonight's agenda has been approved. So moving on to our City of Pittsburgh Board of Education vacancy appointment, I'm excited to say that we have Christopher Figaro here, who is a potential appointee and is joining us tonight to just get to know the board, to get to know the community through, similar to what our interview process would be if we've had multiple candidates, and we appreciate your time and interest in serving in our board. So I did share some questions with you electronically that you can look at, Christopher, while we discuss and share, and just to reflect what we would normally do if we had multiple interviewees, we'll just keep each answer to about two to three minutes, and I'll just give you kind of some eyes as we get toward that time. But please, again, feel free to just share and elevate things that would be helpful for our board to learn, to get to know you as you potentially join us, and for the community as well. So thanks again for your time. So our first question, as board members, we represent our community through policy decisions. What unique viewpoints or constituent voices would you bring to the board table, and how will you ensure that you're working in the best interest of all students?
Sure. So just a brief background, my husband and I moved back to the Madison area about three and a half years ago from Seattle. I actually grew up in the Wisconsin area, Green Bay, and finished my undergrad at Stevens Point before moving to the Northwest. First spent about 23 years doing environmental justice work, environmental work, working within the municipality of Seattle. So I worked for Seattle City Light and started there an environmental, economic, environmental justice program. I was also involved in the city's Race and Social Justice Initiative for about, over 10 years, and I've been doing race and social justice or DEI work in the corporate setting for about 20 years. Currently, I am the lead for diversity, inclusion, and accessibility engagement for type one energy, fusion energy startup. So just additional background, I am a nominee as well, so I appreciate the line of knowledge that you have here. It's something I've been working with the City of Pittsburgh on as well. We have two adopted kids here in the Verona Area School District at Dale Mitchell School and Savannah Oaks, Montana, who are going in as new students coming here. So as a diverse family, I would say we have felt nothing but acceptance and inclusion as part of the school district. My son is hearing impaired as well, and the amount of support that he's received to make sure that he is excelling at school, especially post pandemic, has been phenomenal, and I want to encourage to continue to raise the voices, to answer the question, raise the voices that have not always been equal or accessible at this level within policy for the Verona Area School District. Make sure that, as you think about the success for each student, that everyone has the appropriate tools to be able to access success and inclusion in their school experience. So that's primarily the work that I've done. It's really looking at systems and how systems can be disparate in their outcomes, making sure that we're being very critical and analytical about equity as the foremost output of our systems.
Thank you. Second question, the role of the board is to govern by setting expectations for the district through our policies. We do not make specific day to day operational decisions. How will you balance the demands for action on issues outside of the board's domain, especially when those demands are from well known acquaintances, maybe community connections, with the need to keep our district's focus on student results?
I think the key there is, again, the results. When we have an academic report, which is the basis of that, I think in my 14 plus years working for the state of Seattle, one thing that we recognize in doing our work with the city's Race and Social Justice Initiative is oftentimes we have systems that are complaint based. So oftentimes, if you have access to someone that sits in a position of power and you have the time and resources that are available to you to access that person, that voice can be heard, right? And so I think about families and, again, and communities that don't have that access, making sure that we're equal in how we approach those. But in regards to policy and really what we're upholding within this role, it's making sure that we have communication across the line to all families of what the policy parties are, where our results are from the academic report, and making sure that if there are deficits, that deficits that are shown within the report, that we can elevate the need to increase parties, change those outcomes within what we manage and what we're developing. So I think it's really the communication, there's enough information shared to those constituencies, but all constituencies are being interested in, and again, through our ultimate goal of uplifting all students.
Thank you. Question three, the board governs as a single entity by majority vote, not always a unanimous vote. It is inevitable at times board members find themselves on opposite sides of an issue that they feel very strongly about. How do you personally handle differences of opinion or interpersonal conflict, and what skills will you bring to the board to help ensure that this type of dissonance is productive?
I think all dissonance has a potential to be productive, and that's the work that I love to do in regards to diversity, inclusion, work, race and social justice work. I will talk about that work as, if you're in a position of being uncomfortable, that is really the learning edge. And so I think, you know, I have a family, I have a large, a large descent of family that's part of the community. We don't always agree within those different groups, and I think that those are really opportunities for us to learn and grow together, and especially in doing diversity, inclusion work as well. We want to bring in many diverse opinions in, right? So at the end of the day, we have to come through and really see, are we meeting our needs, of our values, and the ultimate goals that we have around our academic report and the success for students? If we're all collectively going in that direction, I think there's always room to grow. In the Northwest, where I spent 23 years, we have a mantra, you know, to agree to disagree at times, and that's part of that's healthy. So I think if we're in a position where we're always in agreement, that that is problematic. So I think it's really good, actually, to hear your opinions and really understand each other. So it's really the output and the outcomes of what our goals are and where our students are probably, we're addressing this area. I think we can get there regardless of our opinions and what we believe.
Thank you. And our last question for you, as mentioned previously, the board's role is to govern through policy, while the administration's role is to manage VASD in a manner consistent with the board's policies. However, there may be times when administration makes decisions consistent with board policy that nonetheless take a path that's different from what you believe is to be best. What would your approach be in handling those situations?
I think my approach really is understanding the intent and making sure that we're focusing on what the intent of the policy is. The outcome of that, if there's a dissonance of approach or what the decision is from the administration to the board, I think there's room to understand and really making sure that we're looking at this policy more deeply. Is there something with the policy that wasn't clear? Is there room to make it more clear? Are there options for us to work with the administration where that dissonance might lie and what are the reasons for those? So it's really an opportunity for understanding and growth and really then analyzing the policy for what its real intent was and what the impact is. And again, going towards the ultimate goal of student success across all communities, really that is the ultimate goal. I think if we're all in a line of care, I don't think it's necessarily an issue, but there's always time to combat and reflect on our policies and how they can be improved on.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughtful, detailed, and concise answers. We appreciate with a lush agenda today. So board, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Christopher to our Portion Two City of Pittsburgh Board Member seat vacancy, and I would accept a second. Second. Second from Meredith. Any further discussion from any board members? John, the long pause, just in case, be ready to unmute. So there's a motion from me and a second from Meredith. All those in favor of approving Christopher as our seventh board member for the City of Pittsburgh, please signify with aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Welcome, Christopher. We are very glad you are here. Thank you for representing not only your Portion seat, City of Pittsburgh, but thanks to your responses. I'm confident that you will be bringing elevated voices and perspectives that will just continue to diversify the conversations that are board table and to keep ourselves really focused on the work of this board. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So just to make everything official, Corby, as our clerk, would you please issue, is that what we say, the oath? So Christopher, if you would like to stand just where you are with Corby, and he's got a copy for you as well.
Who's that? Is that for me?
Okay.
I, Christopher Figaro, having been appointed to the Office of Verona Area School Board, or School District Board of Education Member, Portion Two, City of Pittsburgh.
I, Christopher Figaro, having been appointed to the Office of Verona Area School District Board of Education Member, Portion Two, City of Pittsburgh.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
But have not yet entered upon the duties therefore swear or affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Thank you, Corby. Thanks again, Christopher. And with that official oath, you are officially a board member, and so welcome to the work. So as all other board members, you know, you will not be a part of motions, voting, engagement, or discussions, so welcome to the table. All right, moving on to agenda item number four, heading into the superintendent's report for the evening.
Thank you. Congratulations, Christopher. Looking forward to working with you and beginning the onboarding process, but, you know, we're really excited for your service to our community, the Pittsburgh area, and beyond. So thank you, thank you for joining us. First, we're excited to bring the Verona Area Education Foundation to the table. Thank you for joining us here today. Here we're going to be able to discuss the great work of the foundation, learn a little more about just a bit of their history and their work moving forward. I'll be supported by Marcy on the presentation.
Yes, I have the pleasure of being the school district liaison to the Verona Area Education Foundation, so I get to be involved with these fine votes and all of the good work that they do. So I just wanted to introduce them to you tonight. We have a few of our members here. The rest are traveling and, traveling and tending to other things, but we have three of our finalists, and they're going to introduce themselves here. They all have different connections to the school district and share with you a little bit about what they do.
Well, good evening. Thanks for having us. My name is John Roleski, and I've been a member of the board for about five years, a member at large, and proud dad of a Verona Area High School incoming sophomore and eighth grader headed into the Badger Ridge Middle School as well.
I, Christine King, I'm new to the board, so I have only been on the board since about March. I have had three kids go through Verona schools, so 2017, 19, and 21. So
One is a teacher, right?
And one is a teacher at kindergarten now.
Excellent.
My name is Nick Grace. I've been with the board for about two years. I'm a treasurer for the last year. I have two children. One is an eighth grader at Badger Ridge Middle School, and the other one is four, so not quite in schools yet, but I'll be involved with the Verona Area School District for many years to come and excited about that.
All right, so we're here today to recognize and celebrate our partnership with the Verona Area School District School Board. We're a nonprofit. We were founded in February 1992. Our mission is pretty simple. We get to raise money to give it away. We raise it to do fun, interesting, innovative work in the education space, and we'll talk a bit about that in a moment. The board, we are a volunteer board. We're almost all parents or former parents of students here in the school district. What's also neat, here's all of our photos. What's neat about this board also, I think, is that we've got a student member this year at Vididian. We've had a student or two come through the board each year, and that's a neat educational experience for each of them. We appreciate the partnership and liaisonship with Marcy, who does a lot of communications work for us as well. And of course, John's a member of our board as well. So like I said, we do a lot to enhance and support the educational experience overall. We aim to uplift that educational experience with our both students and educators in the area. For example, Educator Education Week, which spring is both a fundraiser for us, we take donations, and then we, you can see a sample of the thank you, this mark board up on the board, where we send out thank you cards, appreciation for Educator Education. We have a number of scholarships available, and we do a lot of grants that can teach a grant program, which I'll speak more about in a little bit. Nick is going to talk to us about how we raise funds.
All right, thank you, John. Yes, I'm the treasurer, so a perfect person to talk to you about generating income. We kind of have three main revenue sources right now, but our main primary fundraiser is the annual arts and crafts sale, which Chrissy's going to be running pretty soon here, but we've been doing this for many years. I guess I should back up. Right now, we take in about $15,000 to $20,000 annually overall from all of our revenue streams, but the annual arts and crafts sale is the biggest one. We currently have 70 plus vendors that we pack into Sugar Creek each year. Quick plug, that's coming up by November 9th, the second Saturday in November, so if you haven't been there, definitely check it out. But just a great event overall. It brings in the local vendors, but also brings in student volunteers, the board members volunteer, I think the theater department uses it as a fundraiser with concessions as well. Just an all around great event for us to get our name out there, and that's how we get most of our funds. John had mentioned Educator Appreciation Week, so if people want to make donations in the name of a certain teacher or a group of teachers, we also do that. And then we also have our banner project that John's going to talk more about, but that's completely funded by local businesses in the area. And so the chamber's been a huge help to us the last couple of years, but other businesses as well. So those are kind of our primary funding sources. You know, we're always looking for more, the more money we can bring in, the more we can give out to impact teachers and students. So please let myself, our member board members know if you've got any other additional ideas. But I'll take you back over to John to talk a little bit more about our initiatives.
So the grant program, again, this is where we get to have a lot of fun. Each winter, we take grant requests from teachers throughout the school district. We review those as a board, we rank and rate them and so on. We look for different things like diversity, inclusion, we look for are all the schools being represented, are all grades all those being represented, things like that. You can see some of the impacts that we've had over the years. Our grant requests have tripled over the past few years, so both in dollars and in number. We've got a limit of like $800 per grant these days. I think what is fun about this, again, is these are things that are not budgeted. They could be puzzles, they could be games, they could be science experiments that, you know, somebody wants to take on and do, something innovative, something not, you know, again, typically that they can afford on their own. Kits, costumes for the Chinese immersion events, goggles for swimmers. So it's sort of miscellane, but things that, again, are important to our teachers, important to kids, and when people have that kind of rainy day thought of, man, I wish we had X, we encourage them to put in a grant, and it's, we think we're pretty generous. We think we grant a lot of grants. Check out the Verona press series as well about our recent grant recipients. And finally, again, some fun that we get to have with this board and foundation is the city banner project. So each year, around the winter break, students, again, are drawing pictures and are welcome to compete in the banner contest, and so they get to draw or make their best art. This year's theme was what I do for fun in the Verona area, and you've seen these banners on Verona Avenue and Main Street, and we replace 30 or so every year, and we have a reception for all these artists at the Verona Area Public Library, and we just have a lot of fun, again, helping to better the community, shine a little light on things. Again, we use the art then when these banners, if they come down and they're attacked and so on, we have a board member, Jana, who will sew them into aprons and other things that will end up selling at the craft fair, making money for it, and again, carry away in the next year. So open to your questions. Again, we really appreciate the time, your attention, thinking of us in the future, and keeping us in mind, and we appreciate the partnership. Any questions, folks?
And equal gratitude for the partnership. You know, being at this table where we often talk about budget and things to try to support our classroom teachers as much as possible, we appreciate what you all are doing to elevate, you know, to your point of things that maybe just don't fit on a budget line item in terms of district funds, but really are elevating experiences for educators and students. So we appreciate the updates, your time, and the ongoing work that you're doing to, as you said, generously support requests coming in from staff.
It's my pleasure. Christopher, you're a member?
Yeah, John, did you want to share anything, just given your position on the board as well with the Education Foundation?
No, I'm just, I'm glad that they're here presenting. I know that they do a lot of work, and, you know, I know most people see it up along the roads, but I don't think they appreciate like how much work goes in over the course of the year, or how much good really comes out of it, especially with the teacher grants. It's, you know, impossible to pack into the short presentation, you know, all the different ways that they've touched our classrooms over the past years, I mean, this year alone, let alone over the past year. So it's good to, good to see them there. Sorry, I can't be there in person, but yeah.
Thanks.
On behalf of the Verona School District and all of our staff, I'd like to thank you for the grants and the partnerships, and, you know, I think it is like those things are huge. They make a significant thing, a significant impact on our classroom environment, and our students really prosper when we can provide them appropriate resources for them to be able to thrive. So thank you for everything that you do, and we look forward to strengthening and continuing our partnership moving forward. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time tonight.
All right, next on the superintendent's report, we're proud to put in front of you and prepare both a presentation today, which will be just be an introduction of the other report, but also begin the mailing process tomorrow morning after the board's had a chance to embrace it today of our annual academic report for 2023-24. While the report is a measure of compliance through Operation Expectation Number Nine, it's so much more than that than compliance. It's really, and I'm just kind of going back with order, it's really a celebration of you are Board of Education for your explicit focus on student outcomes and to bring those student outcomes to light in the form of this report and to be able to share throughout our community, regardless if you have a child in our organization or not, it's close to every mailing address in our community, and that is intentional in knowing that there is a larger majority of our full population that do not have children in school, but still their investment in education resonates and allows for us to be able to service our students in such an appropriate, appropriate manner. So if you have a, if you're within the boundary, I've heard we may have shuffled across some boundaries, and I'm okay with that too. You can see we're even a Verona School District, and there's no reason not to celebrate our successes and also be very transparent on where we want to continue to grow in the future, where we talk about our opportunities for growth. I'd like to thank our team that does so much not in just the student outcomes, but to put this report together and the graphics and the, it's a process, but it's the right story of work. So thank you, Marcy, and Karen, who, I don't think she's here, but to Karen, again, for the, for the graphics, for the team, for the, for the data that goes into it, and just really going over and me questioning every word, I know, I know it can be a pain, I get it. Yeah, when it comes to that, but it's just very intentional, and want to make sure that everything is perfect for our community to see. You'll notice that this one was slightly longer and a little more intentional because as we entered year number four, we wanted to talk about the first two years of success or progress in our, in our organization. So within these superintendent's address, which would normally be maybe a page, we went, really went through and talked about the huge buckets where we feel like we've made the most significant progress as an organization. And again, I know that does not happen without this board and the board, the board's guiding direction and policy and allowing our team to move forward under your leadership. So really want to give a shout out to this Board of Ed, and thank you for so much of the success that has been brought upon our, our community, thanks to, due to your leadership. So we sent it out Thursday and just gave you hard copies today. So congratulations on the first, fresh release, and is there, are there any questions that you may have for me about the document, anything that's in it, anything that you want to highlight? I'd be to answer, and if I don't have to answer, I think the team will, so.
This isn't a question, it's just a thank you for the, it's a professional mailer going out to every single community or community member. We have such a supportive community in our public education system, and I know just once you, kids that have graduated out, you start to feel a little disconnected from the core of the, of the district and hearing that there's so many things to celebrate and keeping, keeping all of our community members informed in such an intentional way and the things to celebrate in the future of our district is really appreciated.
Thank you, Meredith.
I appreciate just at the very end, you know, you described the beginning of being intentional about sort of reviewing this debt, you know, how things have gone since your team has been a part of the district, but that you are really transparent about opportunities for growth and sharing leadership moves. I mean, all of the things that I enjoy about the work that we're doing as a board with leadership and sort of seeing this almost summarizes for me some of the journey that we've taken through board meetings through, you know, our results, policy reviews, that this sort of summarizes, I think, for us as well, the work that we do, when things maybe feel a little bit more board meeting to board meeting sometimes. So yeah, everything Meredith said, and again, just being really transparent about what we're working on, that this is not just, look how great we are, it's that and knowing we're always achieving to do more.
Absolutely. Thank you.
One question.
Yes.
So reversing Asian with community members as well and parents, will this be the whole multiplying?
And so we also create, we also create Spanish versions of it that we, we don't always know which one to mail, which also, but we did, we have them for access, and so we try to, we keep stacks of them for the central office, and we also add events where our Spanish region population is more prevalent, we try to have them available to hand out as well. Yeah, absolutely. Great question. All right. With that, I'm going to invite Chad to the board table. And this will be a discussion, or excuse me, an update on the potential for property acquisition. We do not, we're not asking for an action on it for this part of the presentation, but it's an update and for future consideration.
Good evening, Board. How are you doing?
Good.
Great. Christopher, Chad Lezey, I'm the deputy superintendent here. Nice to meet you and thank you for your willingness to serve on our school board. I'm going to have Andy on introduce himself, and then we'll dive into the presentation.
Hi, Andy Kessnick. I am the president of the DL Evans Company and is a local real estate consultant from, working with Chad in the district here for a number of years.
Andy, thank you for being here. This was a, a little bit of a test for me to put this presentation in. We've had a number of closed session meetings with the board as we were working through kind of the competitive and also complex nature of a potential land acquisition for our continually expanding school district. And it was on me to do what I could to take us back a little bit in time in terms of the work we've done over the last couple of years and also make sure that we were transparent with the public in terms of all of the information that we are taking into place in terms of making this recommendation to the school board tonight for a board vote potentially at our next open board meeting. So I'm excited to share all of this with you again in open session. Andy's kind of been along for the ride as we've been working on this for almost a full calendar year and is available if we have any kind of real estate specific, either legalese or other questions that come along. And we're appreciative of Andy and his assistance with the information we're sharing tonight. So our agenda is as follows. We're going to do a little bit of background, kind of walk back where we've been the last couple of years, primarily through reports we've been sharing with the school board in line with OE twelve, responsible growth and long range planning related to facilities and our increasing student enrollment. We're actually going to review a little more detail with the public and even the school board in terms of walk area implications around our current neighborhood schools. We're going to review some recommendations for a potential land acquisition. In particular with the land purchase, we're going to talk through the process, a timeline, and a purchase price. This is a little lengthy. I'm going to try to keep things click notes version the best I can, but certainly, or do not hesitate to stop if you've got any questions at all along the way. This slide to kind of just get us started is to remind everyone that we are a growing school district and continue to have lots of farm fields that turn into housing developments and mixed use developments in our school district. And that is going to occur into the foreseeable future. We could cast this board meeting forward ten years, and there's a decent chance with the way our school district lands and proximity in Dade County, a board will probably be having similar discussions ten years from now on ways to responsibly grow as our school district continues to kind of fill in much of that farm field. This was data that we shared with the board that's been up on our website since we re-upped these enrollment projections. That does show we aren't projecting to grow, you know, 1,200 to 1,400 students in the next decade. And our current schools will not have room for that growth, and that's part of the reason we are meeting tonight. As we worked our way through, and as we're taking a kind of, again, a walk back in time a little bit, these were just a few highlights that we went through with the board in 2023 in line with OE twelve. We reviewed considerations for future capacity needs. We told the board that we believe our most pressing site next is going to be an elementary school. And we reviewed possibilities for areas that we should be looking at for future land acquisition and got very positive feedback from the board in terms of the direction we were heading in 2023. And I shared just a quick summary of slides that we actually went through with the school board over a year going on. Again, we are projecting to pick up 714, let's just call it 700 for round numbers, students between 2022 and 2035, and that's just K five. And we are fully expecting our elementary schools to feel full or over capacity by the end of this decade. By 2030, we will have some decisions to make around either reboundering our school district if there's a classroom or two that happens to be available on a site, or my guess would be potentially even opening up a new school by the time we get to 2030, because our elementary school sites will be full with the fact that we're, we're adding Sugar Creek between now and potentially the end of this decade. And we have to continue to keep an eye on that. Our, and this again was review for the board. We, we thought it was important to keep an eye on the fact that we can't open up an elementary school tomorrow. If we decided we were full when the school year started, there is a long runway to get us to referendum, design a building, get community input through that design, bid it out, break ground, build the thing for eighteen months, and open it up. So we have to continue to kind of keep an eye on the fact that that is a decent leg if and when we decide that the time is right for us to start thinking about an elementary school. Things we wanted to keep in mind as we looked at future school sites, we have to keep in mind where we currently have schools and what municipalities they serve. We didn't get us in pretty deep detail on that tonight. Recognize efficient transportation, and we're going to get into that a little bit more this evening. I'm not going to read this all the way through, but I think the last slide is super important for us to remember. Decisions we make have to be in line with the exact report Dr. Clarity presented to you this evening. And we'll have historic ramifications when we make decisions on when we go to that next school. They don't go away. Once, once you break ground on those, those are legacy facilities that are with you for generations. Reminder to the board and to the community, our school district is not the Verona School District. It is the Verona Area School District, where we serve a decent number of municipalities. We're going to spend time tonight discussing the Verona relationship with Pittsburgh. So those are really the two largest municipalities that we get the majority of our learners from on a day-to-day basis each school year. But we are at kind of a complicated place when it comes to those municipalities. We're also going to talk about enrollment concentrations. And we're not going to get into school boundary discussions tonight, but I think it's important to remember that some decisions were made in the past as far as who goes to school where. And there's some pretty interesting things and some ramifications that came out of the decisions that were made when the district is kind of reboundary in terms of where, in particular, elementary school students go to school. We're going to concentrate tonight mainly on the upper right portion of that diagram, where you can see we've got 682 students, K five, that are just north of PD. And that is, in some regards, the most interesting school boundary area of our school district, where all of the colors of the rainbow, especially when you're entering charter schools, end up going to schools all over our, our entire district boundary, coming from that kind of northeast corner of our school district. I'm going to go through this rather quickly, but want to remind the board, and I believe I even had Andy up here in 2023 when we went through this, that we currently own a future school site, but will likely be a school site. And that's really right now on kind of the southern portion of the developed area of the city of Verona. And it's kind of the Herful Farm, the Herful Property, and was purchased in not too distant, passed by our school district as a potential site for an elementary school. And then Andy and I walked you through what we believe and the board agreed at that time was the appropriate area for us to continue to search for future elementary school sites, primarily on the east side of our school district boundary, primarily for two reasons. We are expecting a lot of growth in Pittsburgh, and I've even sitting on a planning committee right now where another neighborhood is being eventually approved by Pittsburgh City Council for development. And as we will show you this evening, we have a concentration of school sites in the city of Verona proper, where that is no longer the balance of where our school district lies in terms of where students are actually coming from. And that offers some complexities in terms of how we run the school district. And we walked through the board that we wanted, we wanted to take a look at the east side, that regardless of our eventual property search, that it was going to be important that our next elementary school achieve a socioeconomic balance in an already challenging geographic assignment. And we, we walked, walked through the board that the Herful Property would offer us some challenges. And it will eventually be developed, maybe our next school site. But if we were to pop a brand new school down on the south side of the city of Verona as our next school site, we'd have some interesting discussions around which students attended that school. And that's part of the reason we're here tonight, to offer the possibility of only two future elementary school sites that we believe will both be put to good use at some point. And we're here to talk about the city of Pittsburgh. And when Andy and I were here a year ago, I believe we told the board this was not going to be an easy assignment, but we thought it was going to be worth our time to do what we could to turn over every stone in the city of Pittsburgh proper, where primarily all of this is filled in. And it was going to be very difficult for us to find a school, a site that could hold an elementary school, but we were committed to that effort in line with the board's feedback. We, we welcomed the challenge, but we knew we would have fully improved areas with utilities and roads, anticipated high land cost. And we believe that there was, if we had pulled this off, this was going to be a definite benefit for our long range planning efforts as a school district. This is some new data for the board, but I do think the timing is correct and relevant to this discussion, this discussion. I'd like us to just take a look at the upper two numbers, the city of Verona and the city of Pittsburgh, when it comes to the number of students in our school district on an annual basis. That's the lion's share of the students we have in our district. And you can see, you know, almost half of the students, elementary school students in our school district currently live in the city of Pittsburgh. On the chart below, we went through, and we wanted you to all see the capacity of our elementary school sites within our school district. And you can see that just the sheer nature of the fact that we've got six schools in the city of Verona, the majority of our, the vast majority of the seats for all of the elementary school students in our school district are in the city of Verona right now. And the city of Pittsburgh is still growing. And we believe tonight that we have a viable option for us to consider into the future when we actually do build our next elementary school. Again, it's an option, it's a potential. Grounding us again in our current attendance boundaries and the area we're concentrating in the upper right. I'm going to go through these relatively quickly, but I think, I'm hoping the board and the public can see that when we build our next elementary school and have to go through what can be a painstaking process, but I am certainly hopeful that it will be grounded in all the things we talked about relative to our academic results and what's best for the future of our school district, that there are some interesting things going on in our school district relative to the idea of a neighborhood school and the ability to be able to walk to a neighborhood elementary school as an asset in a neighborhood. And I started with Country, where all of the yellow dots on this map surrounding the yellow flag in the middle of this map showed students that live within the walk area of Country View and actually attend Country View Elementary. That's not a ton of yellow dots.
John, are you there?
I'm here. Sorry, I lost the feed for a second there.
Yeah, we had something happening in the building, so we lost a little flicker of everything. So glad to have you.
Oh, look at that. Well timed.
Right?
Marcy, can you, can we check that our YouTube feed is still going? Christopher, this is not.
This is the first time someone's brought up?
Yeah.
I was going to say, on West Pittsburgh, waiting for the crowd to shake.
Oh, right. Yeah.
While you're sorting this out, can I just make sure that I heard the last thing correctly?
Yeah, John, can you hold the question? We want to make sure we're recording for our public, or relaunching for our public.
Okay, I'm just trying to double check, like, when I cut out, that I got everything.
Copy.
Hey, we pay the bills this month, right?
You did.
Livestream?
You're on, yep.
Okay, we're good.
John, yeah, do you want to elevate your question now? So we're, make sure we're all on the same page.
So the last thing that I heard before the feed cut out was on this slide thirty-five, talking about the yellow dots being the students within the walkable radius there that attend Country View, and that there aren't that many. It seems like a lot of students are attending other, other schools in that walkable area. Is that the last thing that was presented then before we cut out?
That's correct, John. Yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And then, John, obviously, then the other piece of that that's true for Country View at many of our schools, is the majority of students that attend Country View arrive on buses. And it's, it's parked right in the middle of a fully developed neighborhood. Yeah. Dad, just do you want to go back until the screen pops back up? What do you think?
It's cool, a lot of time.
Okay. So the board should have access to the presentation. I'll kind of look through this and then folks get this back up, we will go through it. I'm not going to spend a ton of other time. This is more than anything information for the school board and the public to go through each of these. We broke down Glacier, which you can, you can see is, in my opinion, the school feels like is a little more closely knit neighborhood school. Glacier's in pink there. It has a half mile walk area, for the most part, where all of those students are attending Glacier. But then we also have a pocket over in the corner there where students are attending many other schools within our school district. Then we broke down Stoner Prairie, where you can see we do have a bubble of Pittsburgh families that live in the Stoner Prairie neighborhood proper that do have, in my opinion, the privilege of walking to school each day. And lastly, we went through Sugar Creek, and Sugar's a complicated school because it's a twee site and it's so big. But And Sugar's a complicated school because it's a twee site and it's so big, but the Sugar Creek walk area is there for your information as well. So that's what gets us to our proposal tonight. And if there is a slide, I'd like the community to... Of course, this isn't working.
Oh, no. Okay, what slide did you leave?
Uh, it looks like we're on slide 39.
Here's where it's... There we go.
Right now, yeah. Okay. All right, now we're coming with gas. Okay, it moves us to our proposal tonight. So why, what's our why and why now? So the district administration is here proposing to the board that we believe this is in line with only 12 and the direction we've been given by the school board. We have a large number of Pittsburgh students that we're going to talk about tonight that have been in historically underserved neighborhoods. They are riding buses and had, as long as those, those properties have existed. They live in fragmented tenants' areas, and we're going to dive into a little more detail there. And there's limited access to resources connected to a walk school. And we do believe that that is a privilege that some of our families and students in our school district currently have and others that don't. And we're here tonight with a proposal that we believe will make a difference to a decent number of students in the Pittsburgh area eventually. The one we folded here, I think timings of the essence, Pittsburgh's largely developed. And the fact that we were able to put together a proposal for the school board tonight is really possibly our last, our last best chance effort to do this. Not that there isn't another possibility down the road, but for all of you who are familiar with Pittsburgh, it is not full of farm fields that they're planting and picking corn in right now. It's all developed. And to get a site big enough to put an elementary school on is not an easy task. And we are happy to have a proposal for the school board tonight. As we go through this, elementary school sites will be needed into the foreseeable future. Both the purple property and a Pittsburgh property, if so voted on by the school board, will be valuable assets for us into the future, just like the Lacy property. And it will not be the last land purchase that our own area of school district board of education will have to make into the future for a growing school district. This will be a valuable asset to the school district and taxpayers into the foreseeable future. I want to highlight this, the proposal we have tonight is possible without having to go to referendum, pay interest on issuing bonds, and pay this thing off for 10 to 20 years. We have made sound financial decisions the past four years to build up fund balance for one-time purchases, in this case, that will be a valuable asset to our school district. And we do not have to do it by raising taxes. We have used the operating permission we had and put some of that money away for things just like this and the Lacy property. And that's a big deal. We will hopefully shrink reliance on the bus transportation into the future. The property we're proposing that we buy, at least temporarily, has one improved site that could be used for an operations hub and potentially a professional development site, at least in the interim, a property that's in very good shape that we would get used to until it became a school. And in the end, our school district now has two very viable sites for future elementary school properties, both now in Verona and Pittsburgh. Here is the property we are proposing to kind of equate everybody with where this is at, basically at the corner of 18 Verona Road and McKee Road across from Target and Ivy in Pittsburgh, a densely populated area that is very developed. And we have a proposal tonight to own the better part of that city block if we get our approval in two weeks. I held off on this one, but we did the very similar analysis to the color coding we did with our other neighborhood elementary schools. And you will find here, there is no rhyme or reason to the color pattern of any of the students in terms of where they're appointed to as far as elementary schools go. We have every, every elementary school represented in that neighborhood specifically, which to me means no one in that neighborhood has a school they can walk to. All the students are on buses. And you can have pockets of students that are living across the hallway or across the street from one another that could be in the same grade but going to different areas in Verona on yellow buses every morning and not having the community connection, kind of that anchor of an elementary school site. And we did that right in the middle of the property we're proposing to the school board. Here's a walkable school by the numbers, now adding our potential acquisition area. And again, some interesting things here. Thirty-seven students at Country View and 62, if we widen that walk area out, 37 students live, attend Country View that live half a mile from school. 123 students could attend Country View, but for a variety of reasons, including our own attendance boundaries, adult decisions, don't, 62 students live within, are going to school within the walk area and 566 live within the walk area at Country View. And you can kind of see the rest of those numbers as we work our way through that chart. Our potential acquisition area, we'd have 185 students live within half a mile of school and 569, and that's by today's numbers, students live within the walk area of schools. Without taking in unusually hazardous walking or anything else, that's just the bubble diagram that we've been sharing with the school board. We know this site is going to continue to produce students. It is not even stable. It's continuing to grow the number of students that will come to our school district into the future. We expect at least 60 more students over the, 60 more, two more students over the next decade, 36 more middle schoolers. And I actually believe those numbers are fairly conservative with what I'm going to show you right now. This is right off the city of Pittsburgh website, where they have plans to add up to 350 multifamily units, beginning construction essentially right across the street from this property site. So in our property, the western, the western edge would be Cape Town. And they are projecting down the road 350 multifamily units, beginning as early as November of this year to be constructed. So the problem is not going to get better, the neighborhood's not going to get old and turn into retirement living. It's going to continue to produce all kinds of learners that it's our responsibility to make sure we serve them the best we can. Here's the long-range redevelopment plan for future land uses. And you can see all of that is going to be filled in. Most of it's going to be medium and high-density housing. Some of it will be mixed-use of business on the areas that face BCP. So this is an area that's going to continue to be, we're going to need to make sure we do our best to serve it as a school district in the future. Quick analysis of transportation, and these are just raw numbers. We currently have 84 yellow buses on the road, different routes on any given day, and we're spending $4 million a year on school bus transportation. Round numbers, let's assume 400 students could attend a new school here. That could be anywhere between 350 and 500 when we eventually build it. And even 75% of the students in that neighborhood could walk to school. That's 300 walkers that used to be on a bus and been on a bus for the last 40 or 50 years. We eliminate 45 school buses. By today's dollars, that is a $250,000 to $400,000 return on investment immediately the day we open those doors. That's money that no longer is heading towards third-party contracted services and we can be putting into our classrooms. Here's one more detail for the board. We have managed to tie up, either by offer, contingent of or approval, or options, tied up seven parcels with four different property owners. One of those property owners has a building there for a total of 8.5 acres minus the south, the southernmost corner of that entire lot. Here's a summary of the prices we have been talking to the school board in closed session. In line with DPI policy, we wanted board feedback on the prices we were negotiating with all of these property owners. And the total of all of that property purchase would come in at a little over $8.3 million if approved at our next school. And I can flip back through these if the board has questions. I am proposing to you that we would eventually pass an unbalanced budget next year. And an unbalanced budget means revenues and expected expenditures would not be the same. The last few budgets Pete and I presented to you had that balanced budgets. Money in equals money out. This would be our opportunity to dip into the district's savings account because it would not be a new revenue source, it would be essentially our savings account or fund balance. And instead of having cash on hand, we would have the asset of eight acres that we developed in Pittsburgh that we would essentially have on our balance sheet. I thought it would be valuable to the board to kind of see what that would do to fund balance. It's interesting to me that these are our best estimates, that we would have 23 million and change left in fund balance if the board approved this purchase. And that number is still more than we had in fund balance as we back to 21, 22. So we have historic levels of fund balance. Between the Lacy property and this property purchase, this was one of the reasons we encouraged the board to make fund balance deposits into our budget the last couple of years. So if and when we came up with this opportunity, we would not have to go to referendum. This is still well within school board policy for guidelines related to the fund balance management. And I'm almost done, and I hope there are some questions. Part of due diligence is to make sure after all of this is done, that we can fit a school in. This is not the guaranteed mock-up of what the next school looks like in our school district. This is an activity with a designer and an architect to make sure that the property we were going to purchase would fit for a school site. And that's all this is. It won't end up looking like this. But actually, you think after we spent a little bit of time with an architect, there are some reasons to believe that this site lays out really well for an elementary school site. We own the majority of a city block, which means queuing for traffic, traffic flow, and entry for things like deliveries and staff parking, a corner for a main entrance, and an area that would be outside for road park service and green area play, all super doable. This is only a two-story building and would be roughly 90,000 square feet, so a little bigger than a building like Country View or Glacier is what we've mocked up here. And would have a capacity from 400 to 500 students, which is the task I gave to our architects. A third story would be possible, depending on where we eventually end up with our school needs. So the work we've completed so far, we have binding offers or options on all seven parcels. We have a survey, some environmental work in process right now. The FIT study I just shared with the school board, the city of Pittsburgh and their officials are aware of this property, potential property purchase, and are certainly excited about the possibility. Next steps, as far as this goes, we have taken this as far as it can go until we get school board approval. And then we're asking that to be an agenda item on the 19th, where I will type up a pretty detailed memo, and we guess that we would have brief discussions if any, and we would be requesting a school board vote to move forward on the purchase of these seven parcels. It's a lot of talking out of me, and I am available, and Andy is here. There's real estate specific questions. We can go back through slides if board members had any questions at all.
Christopher, one question I had was on the future plans of the Wengra excavation site. I don't know what the plans are for that area, I know that area well, but just in regards to environmental potential impact to students. And I know that sometimes when the air picks up, you see some dust coming off of that site, so. And then, before you answer the question, I did want to point out, beyond the economic benefit of limiting bus routes, there's an environmental benefit as well. So that's an benefit as well.
Thank you for the feedback. I can tell you this, the city of Pittsburgh planners affectionately call the area that is proposed for development the outfield, and they call the Wengra gravel pit the infield. And it makes sense as you look at that map. I can also tell you that the city of Pittsburgh has a long-range redevelopment, future land use plan for that site. It is private, and for me to go into much more detail in terms of when that would eventually sunset, would, I would be, I'd be sharing information that I can't really say is factual. I can tell you this, that it's in the plans of the city of Pittsburgh to eventually have that site redeveloped. I would guess the fact that this property purchase and the outfield being redeveloped would actually incentivize that property owner to eventually turn it back over to something to be redeveloped in the future. But it would be certainly something that we would take into consideration in terms of their timing and dumpster environmental issues that could potentially pop up there. But the long range benefit of that site is...
I want to just add one more thing to that, which is, from a practical standpoint, when they started that pit, you know, many, many decades ago, there was nothing there around it in the neighborhood. And this happens a lot in urban settings, when the neighborhood develops around a use that made sense, when it was vacant land around it, what happens is you get incompatible adjoining uses, is what we call it. And the school is not going to be very conducive to Wengra, and their business operation is undoubtedly going to become much more complicated. It just in general as the neighborhood continues to develop. So there will be some kind of, you know, business incentive for them at some point to, well, the value that property might weigh up as well. Not that much gravel left if you actually drive past, you see they're against the wall there. So I think there are a number of reasons to expect that it won't be there in the long run, but you really can't predict a time for when that would be.
Chad, as we're looking at this, I know this has been an area of the district that has been of interest ever since I've been on the board, so for a long time. This is an underserved area as far as it's really, and you saw with the patchwork of tenants' areas. So I really appreciate that you're able to find a location there, because this is one of those situations where this kind of materialized almost out of nowhere. And, you know, I just want to highlight the work that you all did in finding this and working through to get a potential, you know, option on the property. And also just the work that has been through past boards, again, that preceded me on the board in ensuring that we're able to do a cash offer on a property so we can hold on to it for the time, when the time comes, you know, that we can use it. I think we're in a really, really fortunate situation, but that fortunate situation came about through a lot of hard work, the two of you included. So thank you. This is a pretty remarkable piece of property. And again, I don't think that necessarily this area is on the radar of maybe the Verona proper, Pittsburgh proper residents, but this is a huge part of our district that really, really could benefit from services. And that has a lot of, a lot of pros. We're talking about the environmental type of the busing. I mean, we haven't had to go through a bus driver shortage yet. Everybody walks. So this is really just fantastic, so it's great.
Thanks, thanks for the, this is both exciting and the, in some regards, there's a sense of urgency, because opportunities like this won't be in front of the future school boards. We feel very fortunate that we are just about to present it to you. No, they don't.
Corey, just something?
Yeah, just to touch on something that you referred to earlier, it's pretty easy. When you said anchor, I love that you said that, because one of the first things I did when I became a board member was participate in Dr. Clarity's parental or parent advisory council. And I don't know if you remember, because it's quite a few cents, one of the things that was echoed from the community, from parents who live in that area, is that not only do they feel disconnected from the district, but their kids also feel disconnected from the district. That they feel like they're being bused from one community to another, but there's no sense of community until they go home. And so by adding... And so by adding a school in that area, I think this is groundbreaking, no pun intended. But, you know, to foster that sense of community within a community, and accessibility, parents having the ability to be able to be part, more, more so part of the school district by being able to actually attend events without having to worry so much about scheduling, without, you know, some happens to one of their kids. They're able to get there quicker because they live by the school. So I think this is huge.
Yeah, Corby, in some regards, there's nothing better than a parent pickup at the end of an elementary school day, where you see families outside on the sidewalk, sometimes with their dog, wrapping up, "How'd your day go? Let's walk home." A quarter of a mile down the road to our street. That's something that the families in that neighborhood have never had the privilege of experiencing as part of the resource. And you get, if you need to go to school, you can walk down, walk down the road and you can meet with staff members or attend school functions. It's so much more difficult with the way we're currently lined up.
And the fact that there, there's no real sense of school community even within the geographical area we're talking about because of the Matthew Shover, students are going all over, right? So. John, I saw that you had a, oh, I saw John did a hand raise.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to echo, I think that, you know, we're all excited about the potential here because this, you know, isn't like out on the fringes of our developed community where we're looking at farmland and some future, future growth around it. I mean, this is a rare opportunity in that it's right there, you know, kind of in the middle of a populated area and even more populated areas. So I think we all share that, and I really also share the optimism that this might give us the flexibility to disentangle some of the enrollment data that we just saw, you know, not just up in this neighborhood, but also kind of around Country View and in other areas throughout the district where students are kind of literally passing by each other on buses waving as they go to a different school. And so I like all that. But I just wanted to kind of applaud Chad and the whole admin team's work on this, because, you know, we are very fortunate, we're growing, we've been able to kind of effectively manage resources, and we've been able to invest in a number of good properties in the school district at, you know, very competitive prices, that regardless of what future boards decide to do, are going to continue to be assets for the school district going forward. And I think for me, you know, this is all great and speculative and optimistic, and I love it, but at the end of the day, I look at this decision and it's, you know, a really good piece of land at a really good price, and really kind of speaks to the future opportunities that the district, just like the other properties that we've talked about and purchased here, so.
Thanks, John. We still have something you wanted to add, I'm sorry that I got off a moment ago. I think, you know, to echo Corby, I think this is, you know, what we're, we have a potential, when you have all the patchwork schools, you're really taking away social resources and support from that community. So it's not even just the parents going to pick up their shoes. If there's an emergency at work, you have neighbors that are able to actually support you and your family and your kids, and that's really just nonexistent when you have, when your neighbors are going everywhere, you know, across the district. And that's always been a problem that we just based on, you know, this particular development in a developed area, just by virtue of it being so far away from the hub of all of our schools. Yeah, I just, I just want to stress, this has been an issue that we've tried to address for as long as I've been on the board, and this is really a great opportunity to secure our property, so we have the potential to do something really informative for our district.
I think that's the piece I kind of want to piggyback, just to kind of stick, take the larger view and just perspective for the sake of the community as well, that, you know, to your point, a lot of the slides that you've shared with us, we've had the privilege of talking about in closed session because of statute and what we're allowed to discuss and brainstorm. And to your point, Meredith, that these conversations have been happening at the board table with leadership, but I don't think is forward community facing because we haven't gotten to that point. So to really have some of this data to let the community really see where our students live, I have worked, I've been a part of this group for 25 years, and I still find this data so compelling, and I live in Pittsburgh, but just to really have an understanding of where do our students live, because it is a little disconnected and disjointed. And the slide where you showed really what percentage of our students live in Pittsburgh, it's almost two-thirds of our students live in Pittsburgh. So Verona area, you know, I think when people really stress that that's the name of our district for a reason. I just appreciate all of this data, these slides, and really encourage the community to look and understand, because again, the pace at which you reminded us was not because we were not engaged and wanted to ask questions. We've been able to digest some of this prior, and now being at this moment to really just see this opportunity, as you both have shared, that something like this, this type of land in this position relative to serving students is just, I mean, it's really quite amazing. And Andy, all the information you've shared with us too, about understanding, you know, values of properties, you know, you've tossed the dollar amount for us to see again, but just the analysis you all have done about really making this be a responsible purchase as well for where the land is situated. So I'm just really appreciative again to all the information for the community and for ourselves and board members.
Perfect. Any other questions? I just wanted to, what other community asset in that area, and that's the state county Boys and Girls Club is right across, I guess, kind of one, wasn't one, one line, yeah. So that, I think would be, it's just a great side for really uplifting the community. Thanks for that. All right.
I got one question, and it's not even a question, it's more just to put it out there. I think when, you know, our communities here have had this money to invest, the reason that we can use this for a property, this is not money that we can use for annual ongoing expenses. Is that?
We could. Two years from now, we'd be $15 million in the hole. So Meredith, you're exactly right. So, but I do think that's important to highlight, that fund balance is not a recurring revenue stream, it's essentially the district's savings account, and is best used on one-time purchases. I love that this is a one-time purchase that will likely appreciate as an asset. We also make other one-time purchases in the form of literacy curriculum that will appreciate in the asset of literacy education, but that actual asset depreciates the day we bought it. The land will not, the district will own it. It's not a guarantee that a school goes on any of the sites we currently own. We'll have to do our due diligence in terms of vetting these ideas with the community and school boards, but this is an asset that will go on the books, and we don't have to go to referendum for it.
And we don't have to take out any loans, we're not getting any interest. And then as far as interest rates, I know we've been very aggressive about prepaying debt. This money isn't going to take away from our debt repayment. In fact, we don't have any callable debt that we could apply this money to. Is that?
That is correct. The budget update briefly tonight, and that eventually we'll do when we hand over the budget book with the, with the board. We will still have available tools into the future, even this upcoming budget cycle, to continue working on prepayment of debt, but we do not have callable debt for years to come, and we're continuing to be in a mode of what's called the thesis. So we're continuing to consider that as a viable option, but that's when we will be allowed to use Fund 39. These are Fund $10 that could be used if we had other outstanding debt that could easily be checked off, but that is currently not the case.
Thanks, I just wanted to make sure that we have, our community understands that this is not a, we're just dropping money right and left, like this is actually, you know, because of the responsible, you know, financial management that has been ongoing through the district for years, this is the situation that we're in, and this is a really unfortunate place to be.
Question, years of planning to be able to have this possible.
I hope Joe is not watching the meeting, but I think if he is, he would appreciate your questions, Meredith, so thank you again for having me.
Sure, yeah, I miss Joe.
Yeah, I know, those, yeah, our treasurer has really great frames for this as well. Yeah, and has been a deep part of this, so gratitude to Joe, who is not listening, I hope. Okay.
All right, perfect. Andy, I acknowledge all the thanks for your assistance through this.
It's my pleasure.
Work well.
Thank you. So board, if you have any further questions, just keep things in mind, and we'll be moving ahead then in two weeks to potentially a board vote.
Perfect.
Just on the land.
Just on the land, yeah, that's all we're talking about is the land purchase, yes.
Always at the time, you know.
Yep.
Perfect. Andy, thank you. I'll take, take me out for our guide, Pete. This is going to be much more brief.
So as we transition between Andy and Pete, Chad and Andy, just want to thank you both for, when I, we talk about the complexities of not just the search, but able to find a property in an existing commercialized area, the amount of background work and back conversations and the findings, we really want to extend our gratitude for you and the team's work in this area. And we're thankful that the board will be able to make a decision on this in two weeks.
Thank you, Andy. Great. A very abbreviated budget update. We wanted to do a quick look ahead over the next couple of months. Board members can expect a draft budget book delivered to them on August 14th. The reason we do that is we want to give you a week to review the draft budget book that will be formally presented to the board on August 21st, where we will give high-level highlights of what is in the, our proposed budget as we march our way towards eventually October. And we'll come back to the school board in September and ask you to pass really the preliminary millerick. And again, this is Pete, Chad, the school boards, best guess at where all the numbers are going to shake out by the time we get to October. And we're going to publish, the fact that we're going to have an annual meeting, we'll publish that on the 12th and the 19th. We'll march forward, and it will be September 23rd before we know it. At that annual meeting, we will review all of the details that exist in that preliminary budget book, ask for our electors to sign off on the best guess we have in terms of where the budget's at. And really, Pete is waiting on a couple vital pieces of information that don't come due until October, primarily what, what our eventual property value is, that is equalized property value, and where we end up stating. And we'll be back to you on October 21st and ask for your permission to finalize our budget. And Pete's got a bunch of paperwork to do to make sure the tax levies are set.
Corby just decided.
Yep. A reminder to the school board, these are our working assumptions, you've seen them a number of times, many of these are set, because we're on the second year of two-year budget cycle, others not quite so much, in particular, what happens with paid and what happens with equalized property value. And all that will be detailed in the draft budget book that you will get in the near future. A reminder, this is the calendar year that we're highlighting in the center of the five-year model that now the school board is incredibly familiar with. I highlighted a few key numbers that will likely end up in that draft budget book, so the board can continue to kind of get their minds around. And these are not new numbers, you guys have seen these a number of times. Our goal in the middle there is to have the levy impact have another second tax-neutral impact with our current property owners. Pete was able to dig up just today the reported net new construction for our two biggest municipalities, Pittsburgh and Verona. Those numbers, numbers look quite hopeful. City of Verona in particular had new construction of over 5%. So five out of every $100 that paid taxes last year is new this year, 5% in construction. That is one of the tops in the state, I would think. Many municipalities are hoping for somewhere between 1 and 2%. So that's a hopeful number for us, but also continues to tell us we're a low school district. We believe we'll be able to get our millerick now below 1099. I think by the time we finalize that budget in October, we'll be below that. And also a reminder a week ahead with some conservative numbers, that next year's budget will not be quite as much, I won't say easy, but we'll have some tougher decisions tied to it if we don't get super hopeful numbers from the state of Wisconsin. That's down the road. A quick look back at where we're tracking in terms of what Pete and I are going to recommend for millerick. We believe we'll end up somewhere in the ballpark of 1099 or a little bit lower. And again, our levy increase with banking on that new construction and the school levy credit we're targeting for right around 5%. That's just a sneak preview, more than anything, I wanted to get the calendar back in front of the school board, because we'll be busy a couple of months. We don't have any questions regarding the budget. That's all you, all you did for me today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for visiting, Pete. August 14th has been added to my calendar, so I can have the dogs ready when you're leaving.
Yeah, I'm going to do in-person deliveries, and I expect to see the dogs.
All right, Pete.
All right, so with that presentation, we officially close to Supreme Township Board. Just the team ready for the board, board action.
Yes, so moving into board action, we are going to be adhering updates for our review of results policy 2.2.1, Career and Technical Education. So our monitoring report, all of this has been shared in board docs, and we are glad to see Career and Technical Education leadership team joining us to go through some monitoring report updates. Welcome.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So. Welcome. Christopher, congratulations. My name is Andy Angelkins, Executive Director of Academic Services. Tonight we are joined by Brian X, the Chief Principal, and Jenny Johnson, our CTE Career Coordinator. Not talking about dollar signs tonight, but opportunities for students and the exciting opportunities within our CTE programming. So just to kick this off, reminding ourselves of when we talk about computer and, or excuse me, career and tech ed, we're specifically talking about these courses at 6/8. As you can see, the offerings that we have for our middle school students at Badger Ridge, Savannah Oaks, and for Core Knowledge students as well. Exciting connection, back to last year at the board meeting, we had students from the Badger Ridge and Core Knowledge Student Council here advocating for a new class, and here it is on the list. Growing Green was added just this last year. We finished our first year of offering Growing Green at Badger Ridge and Core Knowledge and are excited to continue to offer that in the future. But an opportunity for us to connect student voice with our course offerings and really show how student interest can drive what we can do within, within CTE. At the high school, the list gets much longer. We have over 60 offerings here within CTE at the high school, and are proud of robust programming that we have been able to make available to, to our students. OE11 drives how students schedule and how they express their interest in courses, their student interest then drives how we build the schedule out, and which of these courses we offer, how many sections, et cetera. But exciting to have all of these options for our students to choose from and to determine which ones align best with their career path and what their goals. So we actually dig into the data. We'll talk first about the data and the numbers, and we recognize that the board has had several conversations recently about the problematic nature of sometimes looking solely at enrollment data. So we invited Jenny to speak to a bit more about what is the impact on students, and what does this actually look like for a student's experience, and then Brian to chime in about the leadership moves that he and the team are committed to, to continue to grow this program. But first, as we look at the numbers, indicator one is the only indicator that's really 612. Indicators two, three, and four are all 912. So when we look at this data, and it's about CTE participation, so how many students are enrolled in CTE courses last year versus 23, 24, we do see a slight increase in the actual percentage. When we dive into that data a little bit deeper and pull apart middle school versus high school, we do recognize that the high school increased substantially and across every single one of their focus groups. Middle school data saw some decreases for some specific focus group areas, excuse me, focus group students. However, we recognize that at middle school, unlike high school, those students aren't necessarily taking a release period. If our CTE enrollment at middle school has decreased, it simply means more students are in art, music, world language, et cetera, but continue to have a full schedule, they've just made class choices that better align with their, their current interests, right? So for indicator one, we do see an increase for all students. 1A is specific to our focus group students. In totality, 612, two of our seven focus groups saw an increase in enrollment percentages. Again, when we tease that out by middle and high, our high school did see all seven of those focus group areas increase. Just very excited to see. As we continue on to indicator two, it is about CTE concentrators. So recently, the board's had conversations about students making selections for their courses that are about depth versus breadth. And we've recognized that some students, their goal is to explore lots of different options. And we've recognized that some students, their goal is to explore lots of different options and try on lots of different things. And there's other students who know what they're very interested in and want to go deep. And those are your students who end up being CTE concentrators. So CTE concentrators are 11th and 12th grade students who have taken at least two CTE courses in a single pathway through the high school. So the example up here is through the ag department, but that exists in all of our CTE departments. So students who've taken two or more courses as 11th and 12th graders. Within this data, you do see, we do have an increase from last year to this year. One note here is that last year when we presented this data, we presented that predicted data because we presented in April. And students had yet completed their courses, so we were making a prediction of what it would look like at the end of the year. Since then, now we've gone back and looked at what was the actual percentage of CTE concentrators last year, which is where we got that 33.7 compared to the actual data from the completion status at the end of 2324. And that's where we see the 4% increase there. More of our 11th and 12th grade students completing two or more courses within a single course pathway there. We look at 2A and we think about students in our focus groups. We have three of our seven focus group areas saw an increase in their students earning CTE concentrators. Looking most specifically at students who identify as two or more races, it actually doubled in terms of the number of students earning those concentrators. Indicator three references dual credit. So dual credit is an opportunity for students to earn high school credit while they're also simultaneously earning college credit. We currently partner with three different higher ed institutions for dual credit offerings, Madison College, Gateway Tech, and Black Hawk Tech. We're grateful for our teachers that go through some additional preparation with those different institutions to be able to offer these dual credit courses. This year, we're actually able to secure grants and allow some of our teachers to get grant funding to pay for them to be able to offer these opportunities for our students. And the numbers show that it's paying off. We went from 40 students at the end of last year earning dual credit within CTE courses to 89 this year. So we over-doubled our total numbers and that carried through for many of our focus groups. Five of our seven focus groups saw increases and some of those increases were quite substantial. Our Hispanic Latinx students doubled, learned from eight to 19. And students at socioeconomic stats went from six to 27. So great increases there in terms of many of our focus group students and students overall earning dual credit through those various institutions right here at Lurin High School in CTE areas. And then finally, our fourth indicator is around our certifications. And so industry certifications really speak to specialized training that we're able to offer for our students here at the high school that are credentials that are recognized and appreciated in the industry. It increases their marketability and allows them to go access different opportunities because they've had those certifications and those training opportunities. So you can see the list here, everything from Pro Start to SOB Blade certifications. Additionally, we have different DPI skills certificates for childcare teachers and some certifications through early college, Madison College, students in the firefighter and emergency responder programs as well. And so looking at what those numbers look like, we have again moved from 83 students earning industry certifications in 2223 to 139 in 2324. So some substantial increases there and many for our focus groups. So six of our seven focus groups for indicator 4A saw increases in their access to and their completion of industry certifications. And we recognize what this can mean for them in the job market and as they continue on their career path. So excited that we can offer these opportunities and that they're able to access them right here at high school. So that's the data, but as we know, I should say the quantitative data, as we know, the numbers don't tell the entire story. And we always want to make sure that we're grabbing in street data and really student experience as well. So I've asked Jenny just to share about what has access to these opportunities for students actually meant, right? Not just enrolling in a course or earning a CTE concentrator. What does that mean for a student's trajectory or their career path?
So as students have had the opportunity to participate in a variety of CTE courses, to earn their industry certifications and dual credit, they're able to really get a jumpstart on their career experiences. So for example, we had two of the CTE concentrators in the health science pathway that have earned credit at the high school and then Madison College, taking the nursing assistant class and including earning their nursing assistant state license. Both students have participated in our apprenticeship program, earning money and credit simultaneously, and they were both working at UW Hospital. One of the students graduated in June and will be studying neuroscience at UW Madison in the fall while still working at the hospital as well. So the opportunities to earn those certifications and the DPI state skills certifications have been especially helpful for our students in getting jobs in the automotive, construction, and early childhood education pathways as well.
So we see the enrollment data and obviously we want to increase that. And we also think about what does this mean for a student and for a student who just graduated class of 2024 off to study neuroscience but had all of these robust experiences along the way at Lurin High School. Something that we're certainly proud of and want to make sure we continue. And so, my principal Cox, so just speak a bit to what are our leadership moves and what do we see as our next steps in continuing to grow career and tech ed.
Thank you, Amy. We have a lot of really exciting things that we're going to kind of share out tonight. Some are going to be some pretty bold commitments that I firmly believe that we are going to be able to accomplish. And so kind of walk you through some of the things that we've done in the past and that we're going to continue to do and bridge that gap into what we will be doing. We have for the past two years had programs and pathways, Mike, that really helps our scholars to connect all of the merit of offerings we have in our school so that they can begin to chart out what they want their four-year plan to look like and adjustments that might be needed from year to year. Along with that, once scholars make their selections for courses, we then go in and do some priority scheduling for different focus groups that we're trying to make sure have access and opportunity to specific areas that are sometimes harder to engage with. An interesting piece that's kind of helped us bolster some of these numbers that you're seeing in the data has been directly recruiting our own. Everybody loves to be recruited, let's be honest. So really reaching out to our middle schools and working with our collaborative relationship between our middle school and high school tech ed teachers. They're able to actually bring them in and show them in a lab space specifically what they'll be doing on a little bit larger scale than what programs and pathways might offer. Something that's going to be a little bit unique and new this year is a lot of our advisory curriculum and what we are doing. I'm very proud to say we have a committee working on this. Last year, starting to chart out our ICAN statements and map a scope and sequence for ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. So previously, all scholars in our building were getting the exact same advisory curriculum at the exact same time, no matter what their grade level was. It was also really good information for them, but what we have done is really matriculated that at the ninth grade, the 10th grade, the 11th grade, and the 12th grade level. So when we start talking about academic career planning, what a senior is going to be getting is vastly different from what a freshman is going to be getting. And so we're starting to tier those up and make sure that it is more applicable for our scholars. We get a lot of feedback from our student scholar panel that shared with us that advisory is kind of something they attend because they have to, but they don't always get as much relevance out of it their senior year because they've seen a lot of those things before. And so we took that to heart and put that challenge in front of our staff. And with that work, we've been able to articulate that roadmap out. With it, we are going to be leveraging the state's ZLO account that they have created for our schools. Might even use my own son as a bit of a guinea pig in this so that he can get in there and start to navigate things and see from the scholar lens where they're going to hit some gaps and some struggles so that we can better prepare for our own scholarship should they run into those same hitches as we implement this. Additionally, we are going to be a site that hosts Wisconsin Education Fair. It is put on by the Wisconsin Association for College Admissions Counseling. And so that will be hosted here in our building this year. That is something that we get a little bit of a cost savings by not having to bus all of our scholars there. But even on a larger scale, we have a huge open access for all of our scholars to now attend versus having to just schedule getting there. So we're really proud about that, that's going to be new this year. And then as we started looking back and reflecting on our programs and pathways experience, we have so many things to offer in this school that sometimes it's like taking your child into a candy store and then looking at all the options and never really being able to pick and make a decision. Well, with that, we decided that we've got to help our scholars start to do more of that academic career planning before January, before worrying about schedules, before worrying about courses. And so on December 4th, we are going to add another layer to this this year. This is one of the exciting things. We are going to be bringing in all our union tradesmen representatives and our military recruiters, businesses from the local community, and we are going to create a career expo for our scholars to then engage with. We've already had our middle school principals put it on their calendar so that we can do this 7/12. We may end up doing it 6/12. I'm going to leave that up to our middle school principals to tell me if we have the capacity to do that in our first year of this. But we've also invited disability vocational rehab services as well as we have reached out to the cutting edge program at Edgewood to try and get them to come as well. And so that'll be another person or another group that we are trying to bring in so that all of our scholars are seeing that representation of what their next step looks like once they leave us. Additionally, we have done some kind of managerial or structural adaptations to what we do in the high school in terms of rotating our supported sections for our scholars with some unique needs so that they're not always receiving the exact same course over and over and over. By putting that cycle in place, you will get different electives, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And so that way, all of our scholars are continuing being challenged again, no matter what their ability level is within our school. Some other options that are going to be a little bit new, and this is kind of where some of the boldness comes out. I've met with some of our counseling team as well as our administrators, and we are committing to our school board and to our community to meet with every single one of our scholars individually throughout the course of this year, either with a counselor, assistant principal, or myself so that we can begin focusing on what their goals look like, begin shaping those their ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade year. So at no point will a scholar leave us after their senior year saying that they didn't have that opportunity or access to a principal, to a counselor, to help guide that work. And so we've begun crafting what those meetings will look like so that they're consistent across all of our APs and counselors that work with those scholars so that we're creating a high reliability product for our community. And then lastly, another kind of structural thing to go through. I was a second child in my family, and so I invariably had it easier. I got to learn from the mistakes of my sister and then make a decision accordingly based off whatever positive or negative consequences happened, put it that way. And so for our scholars that are the first in their family though, we need to be doing something a little bit different for those families and those scholars because if you are the first generation college student, you don't know what you don't know until you miss an opportunity. And so we have created some very strategic checklists by the month for our seniors, whether you're going to the college workforce or the military pathway so that both parents and scholars can, or caregivers could be, and scholars can be following along and making sure that they're not missing very vital opportunities that come along. So that in a rather large nutshell are some of the things that we've been doing and that we're looking forward to expanding upon coming school here.
So thank you. Questions for us?
I know, I wrote a list, but anyone else can share, okay. Yeah, I have lots of comments too, but I mean, I guess my first thing, and maybe this is more when we shift to board discussion, but I know this has come up and John, I think this is something that you for sure elevated as we brainstormed, right, indicators that make sense? What's being measured? Where do we find this interplay of creating sort of combating, you know, just with elevating the idea of just students from enrollment perspective? The leadership moves, oh my gosh, I mean, that, we've talked about as a board member, how much I appreciate reading those, how much I appreciate hearing about those, and like the energy, the data behind what you just said. What does that look like after a first year of implementation? That feels like really interesting data to collect. Is there a way to start to marry more accurately for the board table two, indicators with leadership moves? Because that, I think we're seeing such power in that. And when that comes to the board discussion, that really feels like the richness of making changes and impacts for students. So just want to put that out again, and I was really struck by that tonight, I think, with some of the things you shared.
I think you saw a sampling of that with Amy's key talking points were based off last year's leadership moves. And so she does, as we were all preparing for the presentation to the board, really highlighting how does the leadership move directly relate to a student outcome? So those were the talking points, I think. As we've kind of moved away the peer percentage of enrollment here and there from this group to this group to this group, we've noticed that does the, both the resources that the board allows in terms of finances, leadership moves from our team, how does that directly reflect the student outcomes? And those are the stories that the team was presenting. So I appreciate you looking and elevating that as our continued direction. So I think our snapshot of that process hopefully is taken home with the board. And as we look at this, there's a thing that you've heard the team talk about will be the leadership moves that are on the document. And then we will present the outcomes from those specific years along the way.
Yes. Jenny, this question may be for you. So if I'm thinking of an industry certification, what does that look like from a commitment for the scholar in terms of like, when do they have to be sort of on that track on the courses? Like just what is that a commitment, just sort of broad sweeping in terms of course flow?
So our CTE teachers have done a really great job of actually tying those into their curriculum. So they're taking time to tie it into what they're doing. So, you know, our tech ed teachers are doing NC3 precision measurement because it makes sense for what they're doing. In automotive, they're doing multimeter, I think, multimeter. So they're doing that. And in culinary, they offer Pro Start. So it's really been within there. There have been opportunities occasionally where a student will come in a little bit of extra time to do something that maybe isn't within that class, like a serve safe certification if they're working in a restaurant. And then, you know, one of our instructors might help them with that during A+. But really, it's built into the curriculum.
That's awesome. As far as we talk about, right, students having limited time really in their time with us. That's super helpful, thank you. And then I just have one more thing, and it's actually just, I think, an error on the data that I wanted to elevate. It's slide 65, which, no, slide 60, I just wrote slide 66. So indicator two for the 2324.
We fixed it before.
You did?
Yeah, we cut that.
Seriously? Oh, thank you for telling me because I opened this earlier. And now it doesn't want to refresh. Okay.
We've updated the monitoring report.
Yeah, I thought I, okay, so I didn't refresh.
Yeah, I was like, I don't usually check every data point, just for the record. But that one, I was like, that is not a great.
We knew the math was coming, so.
Okay, all good. Yeah, I'm so not refreshing and updating.
Thank you. Percentage was accurate all along, so it didn't change where we found.
Okay, so percentage was accurate, the number of students.
The number was 23.41.
Okay. Thank you for, I'm a board member, because I try to get my stuff back to working.
So what I love about this is something that Principal Cox may remember earlier this year when I was at the high school and I met with a bunch of students. They were predominantly socio-economically disadvantaged students. And they were what I refer to as non-traditional students. These were students who, they worked to support their family. They're working to support their parents and siblings and also going to school. And what I love about your bold statement is if you meet with every scholar, you're going to reach that student. Because what I came to realize was that many of them didn't know of opportunities that existed outside the University of Wisconsin. They had no clue about Madison College and what programs that they were, they had to offer, that they could take advantage of. And so I love this approach because now you're going to catch some of those non-traditional students who, for whatever reason... students who, for whatever reason, they can't be there at night because they're working. They can't make anything because they're doing X, Y, and Z for their families.
And I appreciate you much of what you're saying too, is we're trying to create opportunities that aren't necessarily, students would have to opt out not to do them, right? You're doing the certification because you're a part of the class and you're already having access to that to get that industry certification just by being in the class, deeply embedded that integrated into the standards mentioned earlier as well.
Other questions or comments while we have the lead team here to go through things with us?
Just a comment, I think the question that I get most often is from people who do not have kids in the school at this time is about our CTE programming and are just, there's so much energy and excitement and I love being able to share like that this is something that we really, we elevate, we have such a sense of pride about this program and for good reasons, I think, for all your work. This is really, it's fun to see, fun to see all the efforts and it's really great to see the kids that are exploring these and then diving deep.
Thank you all. John, before we left the admin team though, are you all right as well? Make sure I don't miss anything with you.
No, I think you guys said it all.
Thank you. All right. Anything else you want to add as closing remarks? I'm sorry. All right. Okay, I feel like you're about to take a inhale. So board, we've received and discussed the superintendent's monitoring report for results policy 2.2.1, Career and Technical Education. I'll now accept a motion to approve the report as presented so we can begin any additional board discussion on reasonable progress. Is there a motion? Okay, with motion by Corby, second by Christopher. Lori, are you good with that? Any further discussion from the board then as we move toward around reasonable progress on 2.2.1? Again emphasizing zoom wait time to make sure that's effective as well. After discussion or no further discussion, I'll just remind everyone that we do have a motion and a second on the table to approve the report as presented. All those in favor of approving R2.2.1 as presented signify with I. I. Wait, John, any, okay, any opposed, same sign? All right, the monitoring report has been approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to board updates, any OEA specific planning and updates? I know I'm making notes, I just with the December 4th, I'm hearing some calendar things that I think would be good to flag and keep the board aware of. I think some of those dates that I'm hearing would be really of interest to board members potentially if those could be things to be a part of.
Yeah, and I also wanted to make sure that I, if you didn't by email, I just wanted verbally put that you're invited to the back to school event sponsored by the Black Student Union on Sunday, August 25th. Statement today before convocation, so I know we'll put board members in back to back, but it's just a nice kickoff by one of our student organizations that's open to everyone within our community and is a great way to kick us off. Mr. Cox, I forget anything about the back to school event.
No, we have just, I think it's 27th, correct? It's on our website.
25th.
Sunday, yeah.
Sunday, 25th.
That's why, yeah.
Yeah, oh, a lot, pardon.
Yes.
Sorry. They're asking about our back to school.
No, no.
Oh, right. And convocation is Monday morning, the 26th.
And then the high school back to school nights to 27th.
It's 28th. Downline we go. It is August, I know. Yeah, but it is still summer, as I was talking with one of your leadership members before. And then general board updates, Corby, I think you had something to share.
Two things. First has to go along with what was just presented, the career in tech ed. Because of the need for outreach for especially underserved students, this Wednesday I'll be sworn in as a board member, board of trustee for Madison College. So, okay, still going to be here, sorry you're not getting real.
Great.
And then the second thing, Dr. Clarity and I, the 100 Black Men of Madison is having or hosting its back to school event, our back to school event, August 10th at Madison TrueX campus, 8:00 AM till 11:00 AM.
Thank you. All right, congratulations, Corby. I look forward to just the greater insights that we get, I think, from each of us and our connections to the community and what that can do is to elevate our board work and just our responsiveness to what's happening too with our leadership partners. Congratulations. Any other general board updates from anyone today? And moving on to public comment, I'm not aware of any, Lori, but miss anything? Thank you. Moving on to superintendent consent agenda, please note that the consent agenda has been updated recently and the updated version is in your email, board members, and it will be updated as soon as possible within board docs for the community as well. So if you've not maybe taken a quick glance at your email version, I would give you just a moment to do that.
I just wanted to clarify to our public on the, for the personnel area, well, it was backward in board docs going into, probably right from this meeting, then we had a rescension of an offer letter by the potential employee, not from the district, so that caused a switch.
Is it corrected more tasking?
Yes, it's corrected more tasking.
Okay, great, thank you for updating it there as well. So refresh if you're a community member.
So you can say, I have to, Coach Snyder?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so sometimes I, we feel good about what we put candidates through to make sure that they're ready, but the Coach Snyder earned the role of athletic director. Very, very rigorous process, full committee. Brian, thank you for turning around a committee so fast to, really make sure that we had a broad representation from our community on the panel, from all aspects of life, our coaching, our community, our activities, our parents, parents that are also on the superintendent advisory, so it was thorough and he went up looking at some really, really top-notch candidates and earned the title of athletic director. So I'm very, very impressed with that. Great lessons to Coach Snyder.
Yes.
Looks great to suit.
Any other questions about anything on the superintendent consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved as presented. Please look over our board consent agenda. Are there any questions board members have on that? Hearing none, the board's consent agenda is also approved. Future agenda items, we've obviously just discussed even a few more beyond this list, but making sure that you hold convocation on your calendar and our regular board meetings with our upcoming budget hearings. Thank you again, Chad, for elevating those dates. Any final questions on the agenda calendaring? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn to close session under state statute, Wisconsin, Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, sub 1, sub C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically addressing the compensation of certified staff members? Is there a motion? Thanks, Meredith, is there a second? Second, Juan Carlos. I will take a roll call vote on the motion. Corby.
Aye.
Juan Carlos, Meredith, and Christopher.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
I am aye as well. We are officially adjourned to close session. We'll take just five to shift around. John, we can bring you in, I think, on a different link shortly.
Are you taking?
Thanks all, thank you, admin team, for all of your time.